I'd like to call this meeting to order. Would the clerk please call the roll?
Councilmember Wolf?
Here.
Councilmember Capes?
Here.
Councilmember Strawn?
Here.
Councilmember Rayburn?
Here.
Mayor Montgomery?
Here.
There's a quorum present.
Thank you. Please stand for the pledge of allegiance. Councilmember Rayburn, would you lead us? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Please bow your heads for a moment of silence. Thank you. Council, do we have any changes to the agenda?
I do not.
No, ma'am.
I would make a motion to approve the agenda. As president?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? And do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So moved.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Thank you. Nancy, do we have anyone signed up for the first public comment period? I don't see Representative Hardister. With your permission, I'll come back to this item.
Um, we got him.
Matthew, would you introduce Jamestown Rotary to us?
Good evening, Mayor and Council. It's my distinct pleasure to introduce Cliff Paddock with the Jamestown Rotary Club. Cliff is in his fifth year as the parade chairman, and he would like to come and address you at this time. Thanks.
Well, thank you very much, Matthew, and thank you for giving me a few minutes tonight, all of you. I'm joined tonight by Stephanie Johnson, our club president this year. She has something she wants to share in a few minutes. But my reason for being here tonight was really to thank you folks and to thank your entire town staff for your help with our Christmas parade last month. Really, starting months before the parade, the folks in Town Hall, Sharon and Elizabeth and Tammy and everybody else who answers phone calls and helps out, took over with mailings. They answered a lot of phone calls, a lot of in-person inquiries this year. Because I think when you've canceled an annual event like we had to do in 2020, there's a certain amount of inertia sets in, there's some skepticism about whether you're really going to do it again. And they went a long way towards helping us overcome that, and we really appreciate all that work. And then, of course, on Parade Day, Jamie Johnson and his whole Public Services staff, they really stepped up. And we've always gotten great support from Public Works, but his whole crew was out there all day moving barricades and barrels and doing crowd control and traffic control. They were really huge this year. So we just want to get that in the record, that they did a great job, and we do appreciate that. And of course, finally, we want to thank all of you. Without your financial support from the town and without all your support on Parade Day and other days, we couldn't do it. And I think we had roughly eighty entries this year. Conservatively, I'd say we probably had fifteen hundred participants, and I have no idea how many people out there on Main Street. And for a club with twenty members right now, there's no way we could do that without everybody stepping up to help. And we do thank you all very much. We'll look forward to doing it again on December fourth with your support and everything else being willing. So thank you. And now, I'd like to turn it over to Stephanie for just a moment. Thank you.
Thank you, Cliff.
Thanks, Cliff.
Just a quick invitation to you all as a thanks for helping us with the parade that year, this year, and also for choosing the winners for our parade float and our parade vehicle. We'd love to invite you all to join us on February eighth for our meeting at the Jamestown Golf Course Menon Hall Room at 5:30, where we'll be presenting the winners with their plaques and awards that you all chose. And if you'd like to see some of the pictures from the parade, please visit our website. Lots of the floats, lots of the people out there enjoying it, lots of just people working hard and having a great time together, which was much needed this year. You can certainly see the pictures and everything on our website, but we'd love to have you join us on February eighth at 5:30 at the golf course for dinner and also the presentation of those awards that you picked the winners for.
Right, so my...
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Thank you. Thank you.
Dave, would you introduce Representative Hardister for us, please?
It's my pleasure to introduce a very hard-working fellow representing a portion of Guilford County, District Fifty-Nine in Raleigh. And he's the chairman of the Guilford County Legislative Delegation and the North Carolina Majority Whip. And he went to school in Grimsley High School in Greensboro, Greensboro College, so he's definitely very familiar with Guilford County. And he has been of great assistance to the town of Jamestown on some issues that we have had recently, representing us with other members of the Legislative Delegation. And I wanted, without any further ado, I wanted to introduce someone who you all know is John Hardister, District Fifty-Nine representative and chairman of the delegation.
Thank you. Welcome, John.
Thank you. Good evening. How's everybody doing?
Great.
Great.
Good, good. Well, thank you all for having me. I want to thank you, the mayor and town council, for your service, and all the citizens tonight for coming out, and of course, the town staff and everybody. I thought I'd just give you a quick overview of what's going on in the General Assembly and just open it up for discussion, if that's okay. So the biggest news coming out of last year is that we have a state budget.
Yeah, right.
I mean, it was a long time coming. We went, you know, two years without passing a new state budget. The good news for North Carolina is unlike the federal government, when they don't pass a budget on time, the government shuts down. And fortunately, that does not happen in North Carolina. What happens is the previous year's budget just rolls over. And so, you know, government continues operating, which is a good thing. The consequence of that, of course, is that there's no additional revenue provided, you know, when there's demand in services. The interesting thing about it is that COVID happened during that time period. You know, the pandemic began, you know, approximately in March of 2020. So a lot of the work that we did went into that. We did pass appropriation bills, and we received billions of dollars from federal government in COVID relief. And a lot of that's gone to education, to hospitals and things like that. We actually still have some of that money that's, you know, not yet appropriated. But I'm pleased to say that we're able to get a bipartisan budget. It's, you ready for this, twenty-six billion dollar budget? Twenty-six billion dollars. North Carolina's the ninth-largest state in the country. And if we were a country ourselves, we'd have, I believe, the latest estimates, a twenty-six-largest economy in the world. So we're a big state, and we're growing, and, you know, people are moving here, which is a good thing. Just a few highlights of the budget. It provides a four percent pay increase for all state employees, an average of four percent pay increase for teachers as well and for public safety officials. It also includes a bonus pay. We had a lot of non-recurring, one-time money where employees will get anywhere from one to $2,000 bonus. That's for state employees and for teachers. Education funding increases by one and a half billion dollars. And just a note on that is, you know, I mentioned we have a twenty-six billion dollar state budget. Fifty-seven percent of that goes to public education. It breaks down, where forty percent's going to K-12, and the other, approximately seventeen percent's for higher education, which would be the UNC system, the community college system. Obviously, we have GTCC right here in Jamestown. And then, the second-largest portion of state budget is healthcare. It's primarily Medicaid. And then, from there, it's kind of a mix of public safety and things like parks and rec and department administration, things like that. I will note that transportation funding is separate from the general fund. When you pay taxes, your state income taxes, when we collect corporate taxes and state sales taxes, all of that goes to fund the general fund, the things I just talked about. Transportation's separate. That comes from the fuel tax, you know, for gas and diesel and other, you know, highway-related DOT and DMV-related fees. But the challenge there that we're starting to run into is, you know, I will say, I believe North Carolina has a great transportation system. I think the urban loop around the city of Greensboro is a godsend. It's going to work really well for us. I've got to hand it to DOT. I think they've done a good job over the years of, you know, trying to make sure that our roads are workable and logical. Not perfect, always room for improvement. The challenge, though, is that we're seeing more electric vehicles out in the road. And, you know, and the federal government as well as the state government. The governor issued a proclamation recently requesting we move towards more electric vehicles, which I think is fine. I mean, in fact, I've been thinking about getting a Tesla if I want to pay for it. But the issue is that they don't pay into the gas tax. Right, you know, you're putting electricity in your car, so we have to find a way to collect revenue on that. And the way I explain it is, you know, I drive a Ford Explorer, and I drive all the time. I mean, I'm up and down I-40 all over the place, and I don't mind paying a little bit of a gas tax if I know it's going to fix potholes and build roads and bridges. I don't mind that. My mom, on the other hand, retired, doesn't drive much. She shouldn't pay as much as I do. But then, if you have an electric car, you're not really paying anything into that. So figuring out how to collect that revenue, whether it's a mile tax or something like that, we'll have to figure out. There are tax cuts in the budget this year, gradual tax cuts. The income rate, which is a flat rate, is dropping from five and a quarter down to five percent and eventually lower than that. And we have the lowest corporate tax in the country. And it's currently, I believe, it's two percent or three percent, and it's going to phase down to zero. And we think that's going to continue to bring more businesses here, so get more taxes just by virtue of having more businesses here. We did increase standard deductions pretty substantially. And that'll particularly help lower-income people who are less likely to itemize. Because if you're stronger, in a stronger position financially, you might have a mortgage you can write off. You might donate money, you write that off. But lower-income people that tend to not own property or, you know, donate as much to charity, they don't have as many write-offs. So we think that's going to help there. So that's just a few things about the state budget. One of the big issues going on currently, of course, is redistricting. I'm sure you've been watching that because you want to know who's going to represent you. You know, I actually did represent Jamestown for a period of time. I wish I still did, but, you know, the districts changed due to litigation a few years back. So I do not technically represent Jamestown, but the way I see it is, I represent all of Guilford County. You know, my district, just by way of explanation, is on the eastern side of county. So in the north, I have Summerfield, and I have Brown Summit, McLeansville, and then I have all of eastern Guilford County. I have Sedalia. I live in Stony Creek. Witsett is in my district, then going south down towards Far Stokes and Julian and Pleasant Garden. So it's kind of like a crescent moon, if that sort of makes sense, over on the east side. The issue now is, there's litigation on the districts that we just configured in light of the 2020 census that was done. We have to redraw over ten years. And the litigation's nothing new. I mean, it happens no matter who's in majority. Every decade, there's always litigation. It's part of having three branches of government. But we don't yet know what the outcome's going to be. But we'll know in February whether or not we have to redraw the districts or not. And then, at that time, you know, we'll know who represents Jamestown in the House and the Senate, and then, of course, in U.S. Congress as well. So I did get a heads-up on a couple of things that you might want me to talk about tonight, which I'll, if you'll indulge me momentarily, I'll just jump right into that and then happy to open up for discussion. So I was asked about House Bill 496. That has to do with the tree ordinances. I received an email on that, said that's been of interest to the town. I didn't have any involvement with that bill. I did vote for it in committee. The bill ultimately did not become law. This is one of those difficult balancing acts where we're trying to balance being protective of property rights but also protective of local control. And there were some issues that arose where the home builders felt like there were some local governments not allowing people to remove trees from their property for various purposes. And in some jurisdictions, maybe local government was not working with the property owners enough, and hence, that's where the bill came from. But it didn't become law. And I subsequently received a call from several mayors in, not just Guilford County, but across the state. So we pumped the brakes on that one after receiving some, you know, feedback, which is good. And that's, I think, a testament to the fact that it's important to pick up the phone and call your Lutschlayer, whether, you know, which, no matter which party we belong to. If we receive enough calls from citizens or from elected, you know, members, a good chance we're going to listen to that. So that bill is currently not going anywhere, and I don't see that bill getting traction anytime soon. The other one I was asked about is local government transparency. That is Senate Bill 473. This one was actually brought to us by the state auditor. There have been some issues, unfortunately, in local governments where the auditor felt like, well, I shouldn't say felt like, I think actually verified that there was misconduct. The good news is, it doesn't happen that often, but there are some bad apples and everything, right? And I won't name any names, but there have been other jurisdictions where there were some issues where elected officials may have been not on the up and up with their position. And there was one case where one of the elected officials in a jurisdiction, not in Guilford County, different part of state, was not paying their water bill. And the county manager said, "Well, let's just turn a blind eye to that," basically. And obviously, you can't do that, no matter if you're elected or not, we got to pay our bills. And so, this kind of allows a little bit more oversight and collaboration with the local government commission, where the auditor can work with the commission to kind of help, you know, weed out those bad apples. And the other thing in that bill is there are some cases where, and it can be difficult being elected official. And I get it, because I am one, and we don't make much money in General Assembly. For those of you at home, you think about running for this job, I would recommend it because it's a good gratifying job and I enjoy it, but get ready to make zero dollars. Because we make, I know y'all don't make much money, but we... You don't do it for the money, do you? You're in the wrong business. Yeah, zero dollars. We make a little bit more than that. We make just under fourteen thousand dollars a year is our salary, so we don't make much money. And so, because of that, you have to maintain some form of, you know, employment. And there have been some cases where some elected officials may have been participating in discussions and decisions that resulted in the organization they work for, their day job, getting a contract. And we want to help prevent that and make sure that there's a recusal if that were to happen. So it's kind of to also protect the elected official from, you know, any kind of wrongdoing. So that's a pretty general overview of what's going on. The final thing I say is that we are getting ready to go back into session. We don't know exactly when. Right now, we're kind of in a holding pattern, see what the courts do, as I mentioned a moment ago. But we will head back into session probably sometime, maybe March or April, and then we might end up being in session a little bit over the summer as well. So that's just an overview of a few things going on. I'm a politician, I could talk a lot more if you want me to. I'll just go ahead and stop right there.
Well, I do want to thank you for not passing the legislation on the tree ordinance and property rights. I thought that was not going to be helpful for municipalities to maintain control and guidance and governance of development of our municipalities. So I'm glad that it did not go through. I appreciate it. I appreciate you coming and filling us in on what's happening in Raleigh.
Yeah, you're welcome. And I do have a check to present to the council, if that would be in order, whenever it works for you. I do, I should have mentioned before that we have a small-town development grant.
Yes!
And so, we set aside money that we put towards these grants every year, and it fluctuates in value. But the small towns this year in Guilford County got fifty thousand dollars. And small towns, I think, are, I hear it applause back there. And so, I think the small towns are defined as, if I remember correctly, I think it's fewer than ten thousand in population. And so, what I've noticed is, small towns tend to be very frugal with their money. And I've seen that money have an impact, you know, because the citizens tend to be so involved, and the council's very involved with the citizens, so that, usually, that money really does have an impact. But you'll be receiving, this is probably for the staff, you should be receiving a call from OSBM pretty soon, you know, indicating the money will be, you know, sent to the town, and no strings attached.
Thank you so much. Very much appreciated, yes.
We'll get your account number. So any further questions or anything for me while I'm here?
Appreciate you coming out.
Yeah, thank you so much for coming, yeah.
Yeah, definitely. Well, if it's in order, I can go grab the check and present it to you. That be okay?
Sure.
All right.
Present it back anytime.
Thank you.
Come right back.
Well, yeah. Well, I always take money.
This really is. All right, Madam Mayor. Oh, you, Madam Mayor.
You need a picture of that.
So I have the check here, and I'm going to sign it with a sharpie. So, could it be ordered? Could you cover it up?
Yeah, this gives a good picture.
This is, this is actually, I've served in office for ten years, actually, the first time I've done this.
Oh, really?
Yeah.
It's awesome.
Awesome.
Need a really big billfold.
Great, thank you.
Please do.
Thank you so much.
Well, thank you all again for having me. This is an honor. If you need to get in touch with me, I'm easy to track down. And for the citizens in the room, if you need to track me down, just Google John Hardister and all my name. All my information comes up. Thank you all again, I appreciate it. Have a great night.
Thank you, sir. Be careful.
Honor's ours, we appreciate you.
Chief Carson, would you give us a report from Poncoff-Seddenfield?
Good evening, Mayor and Council.
Good evening.
Once we get the slideshow up, I'll get started.
Chief, did you bring him the check?
I was on site, yeah, that's... You've got a hard act of law.
Follow fifty thousand. Well, while she's getting that pulled up, tonight I'll be presenting the 2021 review of our year back last year and the data associated with that. Last year for us, we were hoping we were getting out of COVID. But as you all know, COVID was just as strong last year as it was the first year. So it was a year of adapting and continuing to adapt. But we were hit with COVID just like everybody as far as having to... But we were hit with COVID just like everybody as far as having to deal with it. It was a staffing issue for us, especially toward the end of the year as the other variants started coming along and it became so contagious. But we continued to provide staffing. Our people stepped up. We were able to hire back staffing. People that weren't on duty were coming back in to work. And so our minimum staffing was, stayed the same and consistent throughout the year. So all in all, we had a really good year. I like to start by showing our organizational chart. We have four, we have five stations. Four of them are manned or staffed. Station 46 being one of those. They're all staffed with at least three people on the truck. And so when the truck does respond to your call, to a house or to a call, it's responding with at least three people as part of our effective response force. We do have, like I mentioned, five stations. Those stations are over 52 square miles of district, with Jamestown being in the northwest portion. But Station 23 on Mackey Road is the next closest station that responds a lot into Jamestown, as well as High Point responds into Jamestown as well, with two of the stations that they have as part of the automatic aid agreement with us. We do serve a population of right at 30,000 people. Our operating budget this last year was a little over 4.2 million. Our contract with Jamestown, that was right at, little under 700,000 of that 4.2 million was the contract with Jamestown to provide service in the town. Our current insurance rating in the town of Jamestown is a Class II. That ISO rating is every five years, roughly every five years. And so we're expecting to be rerated in the fall of this year or the first of 2023. So we're constantly preparing for that with continuous improvement measures. And so we're preparing for that, looking forward to that again. The rating in the rest of our district is a Class III. And the reason for that is because of the hydrants and the water supply in Jamestown really helps with that part of the grade. As I mentioned, Station 46, right next door, is staffed with three people. And that's one engine that comes out of that station as well as an EMS unit, too. So we're fortunate to have the EMS base here in Jamestown as well. And so a lot of times, that station is responding right away with EMS if the EMS truck's not in-house. And as you'll see in a second, medical calls are our highest number of calls that come out of the station. Our fire prevention in the town, like I mentioned with COVID, fire prevention was tough. We have to come up with creative ways because this last year, we weren't able to get back into schools either. Our highest number of fire prevention and fire and life safety is done in the elementary schools and the high schools and middle schools. And so that number is down from where we like it to be. But we were able to still deliver 17 programs to reach 628 children and adults, being mostly teachers and those adults are the teachers, for staff hours of right at 19. And we did install 18 smoke alarms. We're still, we are doing smoke alarm canvassing. And so we try to select a day. We participate in a statewide smoke alarm canvas that they do across the state in the summertime. But then we also are trying to get back into doing those on a quarterly basis. So we'll put that out on our social media. And we may look at doing avenues with the staff as far as maybe on some mailers and different things, to get some different areas that we can get into in the district, in Station 46's area of Jamestown. As a whole, for our training, we offered 631 classes. Of that, 2,685 hours of training were conducted. And class hours and then total staff hours of 11,240 hours of training. So we're fortunate right here in Jamestown to have the GTCC Fire Academy and the resources right next door. So we spend a lot of our time. 46 is able to go over there and still be available for calls while they're training and not having to go out of service. Our total responses for the year as a department was 3,192. You can see Station 46 was 521 of those. So they're right at, right at fourth of how busiest we are. Of those calls, you can see the breakdown. The medical calls are right around 60% to 70% of our calls at 1,770. We did have 267 fire incidents. Those weren't all structured fires. Those were fire incidents of some sort. 264 fire alarms, 299 motor vehicle accidents, and then other calls, false alarm, good intent calls. We group all those together, and those are right under 600. When we look at Station 46, of that, the percentage is pretty much marry up with each other and mirror and stay the same. We did have 327 medical incidents. So that can be anywhere from a lifting assistance call, a fall call, to a cardiac call. All the medical incidents, we group together. The only thing we break out of that is our motor vehicle accidents. That's considered a medical call. But we break that down and break it out so that it can be separated. Fire incidents at 30, and I'll touch on the fire incidents on another slide and dive into that just a little bit more. 67 fire alarms and then 75 of the good intent or service calls. Some of those service calls are when we go out and we initiate a call to install smoke alarms, we make sure that we put a call in so that we have a record of it. As you can see with the call trend over the last six years, once COVID hit, our call volume went down. We were looking at about 8% growth every year in Jamestown and as a district as a whole. And then once COVID hit, that obviously, we cut out a lot of the calls that we were responding on. Those calls were still being answered. But if it was a priority call, we were still going. But on some of the non-priority calls, we didn't initially because EMS was handling those, just because we didn't know as a service we were trying to prevent the spread of COVID. We've since learned of strategies and ways to prevent that. And we've gone back to riding all calls and more than what we were before. We are seeing right now that call volume for this year, compared to where we were last year, is already up 20%. And so that's on top, getting back in line where we were pre-COVID. That's in Jamestown as well, that we're seeing that. November, to note along with that, November and December were our two highest call months on record in the history. So it's kind of interesting to see. Some of that wasn't attributed to the storms that we got in January. So we saw a lot of calls in January with the storms that we received that's outside of this dataset. But we did ride, as a district, around 50 calls in the first storm we had within about 36 hours. So fortunately, in Jamestown, we were able to dodge a lot of that bad weather. I like to put this slide up in here just because Shannon Gray was a big contributor for a lot of our calls. We've done a lot of public education over the last couple of years with Shannon Gray Nursing Facility, as well as other nursing facilities in Guilford County. And so we've really tried to educate them on when to call and things that they can handle in-house. And again, going back to priority and non-priority calls. Because you can see, we're riding about close to 175, 200 calls there. And not that it was an issue going, but a non-priority, non-urgent call was pulling us out of the station to where we could respond and be available for another call that was an emergency call. This last year, we rode nine calls over there.
That's crazy.
It is. So one thing that's attributed to that is the nursing facility, all the skilled nursing facilities. We didn't ride as a whole in Guilford County. Fire departments didn't ride unless it was a cardiac or a breathing issue where it was, we were needing to go and help in that sense. But if it wasn't a cardiac call, we pretty much weren't going because they could handle it with the nursing and skilled facility staff that was there. So again, that was where we were seeing a lot of the clusters in the COVID cases. And so we were trying to really avoid going into those and contaminating us going in and potentially cross-contaminating their facility as well. As a whole, for our entire district, we had, you can see the numbers here. I don't really need to dive into those. I'll dive into the ones in Jamestown. But you can see that what we capture is amount of property exposed to fire in the district, and then property loss that was contributed to that incident that we responded on. This takes property value, real property, as well as motor vehicle property, any of those. And what we typically see is if it's a car fire, it's 100% lost. So those tend to drive up our numbers, especially when you look at incidents on the highway with large tractor trailers and that type of thing. In the town, in Station 46's district for last year, we were very fortunate. There wasn't, and we've seen this since COVID, a lot of call volumes down, but also people are home. And so with people being home, they're being careful, being safe, and we're not seeing as many fire incidents. As you can see, there was only $140,000 exposed to fire, with 59% being lost to fire. One of those was the house fire over in Oakdale. And that was the contributing factor to a lot of that loss. We also had a commercial lawnmower fire that was the other part of that. So we were very fortunate for the last year to keep fire loss down in the town. And you can see that those numbers reflect that.
That's really good.
The last couple of slides, and I'd like to just touch on this and show where we're at with this, because it's a priority for us and something that we've been working on, is to continue to work toward turnout times, keeping our turnout times low, and which in turn keeps our travel times lower. And so we, that travel time on the bottom is how long it takes from the minute we get in the truck and leave to the time we get there. The turnout time is how long it takes us to get out of the station from the time of dispatch until the time that the wheels start rolling. So you can see the turnout time is a minute 34, and that's on a 90th percentile. So the average is well under a minute. But on 90% of the time, we're out the door in a minute 34. Our benchmark's two minutes on that. And so what we're seeing is we're getting on scene faster. And especially on the fire calls, that's making a big difference to be able to get there before a lot of flashover, life safety hazards and everything else, but also on the medical incidents. And so our goal is four minutes throughout the district response time. And so when we're getting out the door in a minute 34, our travel time is 4:21. On a 90th percentile, we're seeing that the majority of the time we're on scene in under four minutes of the time you call 911, and especially five minutes. So that's a big thing for us. One of the capital investments that we made over the last year was station alerting. It was a new, I think I came and mentioned it to you at maybe a prior meeting, but it's a new technology that allows us to be alerted faster. It's a direct feed. We're utilizing technology that now, at nighttime, lights come on automatically and it'll alert us, and the station itself is able to be alerted independently. Before, all of our stations, if Station 46 was dispatched, Station 25 down in the southern Guilford area was dispatched as well. All the house sets opened up. And that was just a technology of the past, and we were able to capitalize at this station. And sleep deprivation and the health hazards associated with that's a big thing. And so we've been able to combat that, as well as response time improvements, too. The other thing I just did want to mention that we kind of wanted the things for the year, we were able to put a new fire truck in service in the town. I know all of y'all were there. And that was a great night that we were able to spend together and really do something special for the department, but also the town. It's been, since the early 90s, since a new truck was put in Jamestown. And so it was a priority for us to get a truck here as we were working toward our apparatus replacement plan. And so it'll serve the citizens of the town for a long time going forward. But that's all I have. Any questions that y'all have related to the report or anything else, I'll be glad to answer.
Chief Carson, just curious about one thing. The calls that you make to different houses as far as putting in fire alarms and so forth, that's still done free of charge, is it?
Yeah, that's completely free. We receive the smoke alarms free of charge through the state and other nonprofits that help us with that. And so any of those are free of charge to the citizens if they're interested in those. And we try to put stuff in the newsletter. Our number's always in there. So for the ones listening at home or reading about it, if you need a smoke alarm, free of charge, call us and we'll come put them in for you as well.
Yeah, that's a great value add. I just want to make sure you guys are getting credit for that. That's good stuff. Thank you.
Thank you so much for your report. Yeah, I appreciate you keeping us safe.
Yeah.
And y'all stay safe, too.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Lieutenant Lyson with Guilford County Sheriff's Department won't be able to be with us this evening, so he is hoping to attend February 15. And Anna, would you continue with the land development hearing, please?
Good evening, Mayor and Council. And your agenda is it talks about an LDO update for Articles 17 and 24. 17 is a side ordinance. 24 is the newly updated minimum housing and non-residential standards. These articles have had some changes and updates and clarifications since being at Planning Board. Councilmember Strong, who's on the phone with us today, has suggested the LDO updates be returned to Planning Board for additional review and clarifications. Town staff agrees with that suggestion and recommend bringing it to the next regularly scheduled Planning Board meeting, which is on February 14, Valentine's Day.
I'd like to move that we refer the LDO updates back to the Planning Board for further review at the February 14 meeting and continue the public hearing to Council's February 15 meeting with no further advertisements.
On favor?
Aye.
Okay, thank you.
I don't guess there's anyone here that wanted to speak?
What I was going to ask, since this is a public hearing, if there was anyone here to speak, we were going to allow them to speak about the land development ordinance at this time, if there's anyone. And if not, we will continue this until the next meeting.
Okay.
Just one person.
The land development ordinance.
There's some updates to it on the sign and minimum housing standards.
Good evening again, Mayor and Council. As you are aware, the public hearing for the annexation of the DeR Horton property, formerly known as the Johnson property, was opened at the November 16, 2021 regular meeting. And as we discussed, both that meeting and the December 21 meeting, the matter is not yet ready for discussion. Therefore, and we're still in that same state, the staff is respectfully requesting that the town council continue that public hearing without further advertisement until the February 15, 2022 regular town council meeting. It is a public hearing, so if there are people that have comments, we will open it at this time. Thank you.
Before we have a motion, Council, I'd like to ask if anyone is here to speak during the public hearing about the annexation of the Guilford College Road property, please come forward at this time, state your name and your address.
Hi, my name is Ron Cross. I live at 5600 Wellesley Drive West. My question is, I know my mother and I, we received letters about the town hall meeting, but a lot of our neighbors, they have not received it. Because when we get it, we talk to them about it, they haven't received it in the mail. So my question is, how come it seems like only certain members of the community is getting a letter and a lot of them is not getting a letter?
Okay, I'm going to refer you to the town hall. If you'll call them during regular business hours, they can give you an idea of the map that the houses would be included in that receive that letter.
All right, appreciate it, thank you.
Thank you. Yes, sir?
I just thought it might be good for clarification purposes to go ahead and address that. So state law only requires that we identify, that we notify immediately adjacent property owners. Our ordinance goes a step further and says that we should notify everybody within a 500-foot radius. And in this particular case, because it is such an interesting issue for all of our community, we went a step further and we notified everybody within a 1,000-foot radius of that subject property. So if you did not get a letter, it's because you don't meet that criteria. You're not within a 1,000-foot buffer of that property. But all that information is available at town hall, as you said, and we'd be glad to speak to anybody about that.
Okay.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you for that clarification. Would anyone else like to speak on that?
Would you like to come up?
Hello, my name is Jose Arageta, and I live in Hunches Drive, 3901 Hunches Drive in Fox Hollow. And I was just kind of supporting Ron about what he said is true. It's very important for us to receive those notifications. And another thing I wanted to speak about was about the land of the Johnson farm. There are some neighbors of ours that I want to speak like behalf of, and they were having some concerns about the people in the town of Jamestown, about pretty much, like, what will be built on the property of Fox Hollow? And will there be an X amount of feet where trees will remain? Or will all that be removed? And that's pretty much sums it up. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Would anyone else like to speak concerning the annexation?
I would make a motion then to continue this public hearing on annexation. I would make a motion then to continue this public hearing on annexation to the February fifteenth, twenty-twenty-two council meeting in the Civic Center at six o'clock.
Second.
On favor?
Aye.
All opposed, thank you. And that was without further advertisement, correct Martha?
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
Thank you. As a part of that same request, there are, there is two items. There is a request for a rezoning and as a part of that rezoning request, there is the request to pass a development agreement. So the, the next two items on the agenda deal with those two items. As I just said, the, the matter is not ready for discussion at this particular time. There is a framework document that our attorney has been working on, Tom Tarrell. We are continuing discussions with developer at this time, but we are asking the council again to continue both of those items, both the development agreement and the rezoning request, until the February fifteenth, twenty-twenty-two regular council meeting. Thanks.
Thank you. Before I accept that motion, I'd like to again, open it up to anyone in the audience who would like to speak on the rezoning or any comments on the development agreement.
For a rezoning, part of that rezoning request, the development agreement, so the next two items on the agenda, it was listed, like, as it is said, it's not, it's not, credit for discussion. It was timed.
Is that Lawrence or is he pulling back?
I don't think that's Lawrence. I'm sorry.
It's okay.
Please continue.
It's all right. How you doing? My name is Ron Cross again. About this zoning agreement, will we know what's in the zoning agreement or how can we find out what's, what's going to be, being put inside the zoning agreement?
Yes, sir. You will, you will know about that.
Okay, all right. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else like to speak at this time? Matthew, do you want one motion to continue both? Two motions? Okay, do I have a motion?
Yeah, I would move to continue the public hearing on the rezoning request from D.R. Horton to the February fifteenth, twenty-twenty council meeting here in the Civic Center at six o'clock without further advertisement.
Thank you.
Second.
On favor?
Aye.
All opposed. And do I have another motion concerning the development agreement?
I'll, I'll keep on rolling. I'll make a motion to continue the public hearing on the development agreement to the February fifteenth, twenty-twenty-two meeting here in the Civic Center at six o'clock without further advertisement.
Second.
On favor?
Aye.
All opposed. Thank you. Thank you, Martha.
Yes, ma'am.
Judy, would you discuss the financing of golf equipment, please?
Good evening, Mayor and Council. This is just for, for information only, there's no, will be no action taken on this tonight. So back in July of twenty-one, we ordered two pieces of equipment for the golf course and these were to be financed by one of our local banks. And at the time, we thought that this equipment could be procured within several months. And so the interest rate that, that the bank gave us and we accepted as the lowest rate at that time was locked in for, you know, a period of approximately several months.
Right.
Due to supply chain issues, we have still not received that equipment and we're not exactly sure when we will get it. They're saying now that perhaps March, but that remains to be seen. So at this point, our rate with the bank is no longer valid. So we're gonna see when, as, as best we can, updates on the equipment comes available, we'll be in touch with the bank as far as the rates at the time and then we'll, we will come back to council with that. So just wanted to inform you of what was going on with that situation.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Counsel, at time again, where we assign the delegates and alternates to committees and organizations. And the first one is the Piedmont Triad Regional Council. In the past, I have served as that delegate and I need a recommendation and a motion to appoint someone to that position.
I, I would nominate you, Mayor Montgomery, if you're willing to serve again to be our representative. If you are, then I'll, I'll put that in a form of a motion.
Please.
That we appoint Mayor Lynn Montgomery as a delegate to the Piedmont Triad Regional Council.
Second.
On favor?
Aye.
All opposed. Thank you. And I also need a delegate, an alternate delegate for the PTRC.
Who was the current alternate? Do we know? Have an alternate?
Do we have one?
Is the town manager the current alternate?
No, that was Councilmember Strong.
Councilmember Strong.
He was? Okay. It's hard to ask him if he's willing to serve as an alternate again. Can you hear us?
I'll just follow and told him like I did you.
I know, yeah.
Lawrence?
Yes?
Are you willing to serve as the alternate delegate to the Piedmont Triad Regional Council?
Does it pay at least as much as what we make now?
Yes.
Twice.
Okay, I'm on board then.
Okay.
Okay, then I would nominate Councilmember Strong to be the alternate for the Piedmont Triad Regional Council.
Second.
On favor?
Aye.
All opposed. Thank you. Moving on to the next item, that will be the TAC rep and the alternate. And that is for, at this time, I believe, Councilmember Wolf is the representative. Would you be willing, if nominated, to serve in that position?
If council so desires. Do I have a motion?
That I move that Martha Wolf be, continue to be appointed Transportation Advisory Committee Representative and alternate for the High Point Metropolitan Planning Organization.
Second.
On favor?
Aye.
All opposed. And at this time, who is our alternate? Nancy?
That was also Strong.
I thought, yeah.
Lawrence, will you be willing to serve as that alternate again?
Certainly.
Thank you. Do I have a motion?
Well, I, I would move to appoint Councilmember Strong as the alternate representative for the High Point Metropolitan Plan Organization.
Second.
On favor?
Aye.
All opposed. Thank you. Okay, now we have our representative to the Planning Board. Councilmember Raver has been that representative. Do I have a motion for appointment?
Certainly make a motion if she is willing, I believe she is, to serve as our representative to the Planning Board again.
Second.
On favor?
Aye.
All opposed. Thank you. And the last item will be the council rep to the Parks and Rec Committee. That has been Councilmember Capes.
Are you willing to continue?
Absolutely.
Then I move that we appoint Councilman Capes to represent on Parks and Rec.
Second.
On favor?
Aye.
All opposed. Thank you all for your willingness to serve on these committees. Dave, do you have a manager's report for us?
Yes. To quote Councilmember Strong. We had a, this last Friday, even though weather was upon us, we, the board and staff met at the town council strategic planning and budget retreat. And we started about nine o'clock and finished up perhaps twelve-thirty or one. And we reviewed the progress made on the town of Jamestown strategic plan with the outcomes and goals that were adopted by Mayor and Council, July first of this year, with the budget. And we gave progress that we had, had done from around March or April through June and then through December and January and then in July, at the close of the year, we will review. And we marked progress on goals and we drop off some that we've completed, we modified some and we added some on. And a lot of information was shared with the board and I would say that y'all were paid the same rate for that as you have everything else, which is nothing. And the, I presented a lot of information and through some sickness, we did have some that were not able to come and we will brief them on that, perhaps starting next week.
Sorry about that.
We also, well, had we had it the week before, I wouldn't have been there. So it, it's been nip and tuck, you know, staff and COVID and sickness and it's been very difficult, but we have managed to meet and got some business done. And we also did one thing, the budget for next year, July first through June thirtieth, has started. We have begun to work on it and the one thing that we did is review the current capital budget and the current capital budget for both the general fund and the water and sewer utility. And we reviewed the progress on those and then we talked about some things that we thought were upcoming that we might need in the budget. Council heard that information and we will begin to include some of those new things, you know, in the budget for consideration by Mayor and Council. We also presented the wastewater needs study by Hazen and Sawyer and we were asking the question, you know, what the capacity of our water and our sewer on the system. And we, with the answer to that question through all of the engineering words, where yes, we do have the capacity for some future growth and development within the area. And we also talked about future staffing that might be impacted by growth. We talked about taking a look at current facilities to see, you know, how we might maximize space. And one of the things that did come out of the meeting is I know at the, about two meetings ago, the Pine Cross Sedgefield Fire Department, and I would say that that is a very outstanding contract that the mayor and the board entered into and has paid great dividends. We have a very desirable Class II rating, which saves businesses and households money on their insurance. He said the rest of the area had a three and we had a two. We have an evaluation coming up, but one of the things that we participated with them last year is we had a location study. And after they went through the process for the location study of a fire department, they determined that the best place was right where they were. And out of there, you know, we have the three firefighters that respond. We also have the EMS. And one of the things that we talked about with Pine Cross Sedgefield and we'll talk to the county about is taking a look at space utilization for the future. This isn't a, something that would impact us right away, but they would be willing to participate us with a study of space utilization of the current facility that's been in operation at some time and you'll see that included in next year's budget as a recommendation to take a look at how we might best utilize that particular space. And we did look also at the operations of our golf course over the last five years and reviewed that. We have, would announce and did announce that the recreation maintenance facility is being bid out. We did get word that that building does contain steel and we're not quite sure when we will be able to get steel, but we will bid that out. It's a plan that, a goal that the board had last January at the, the first annual meeting that I attended. And so that has been bid out and we will receive bids, they will be brought back to Mayor and Council, hopefully good bids and we can approve that and, and begin construction on that. It did take quite a bit of time with Guilford County reviewing the plans because they are much overworked with all the growth and development and all the constraints that we have, given the COVID environment that we're working in. We also included in this year's budget a, to take a, a look at the waste collection and recycling system. And hopefully in February, we will have a, a report to brief council with of the results of that and perhaps have a, a presentation at a February meeting or a March meeting or, you know, as quickly as we're able. But we will get that in and brief the board on that so that you'll have that information ahead of time. And we, one of the big things is that we're still working on and perhaps had I been well for the whole time, we may have had that completed, but we're working out a business continuity plan to make sure that we have a proper staffing for the future. And in a big organization, you can have somebody come in and pick up and carry on. And in a smaller organization, we don't have that luxury. So we have to make sure that we try to plan in advance if somebody's out for an extended time. I, I have kidded in the past that our current town clerk, that we told her she'd have to postpone having that baby. She didn't think much of that idea, but we, you know, so when someone important is out, you know, we have to have temporary help and certainly Nancy Avery has joined us as a retired clerk and has filled in. So we really have to scramble, scramble for staffing and so we are working on a plan to make sure that we have the proper people in place because we don't have backups. We're, we're working live from day to day. The other thing that we've been working on is a process for the selection of a new town manager in Jamestown and that process is ongoing and hopefully will end in, in the near future. And Benchmark continues to work with the town of Jamestown on a strategic growth plan to take a look at income and expenses for new growth and development. And perhaps when we do the briefing on the waste management and recycling, I may be able to, to give a preview of the results of that study for, for the future. And so actually, there is a lot going on and all of the things that I mentioned are goals that the board has approved and will be loading up in February and March. We are working on the town budget with your very capable finance staff and, and leadership team and we'll be working on that. So without any further comments, if you have any questions of me, I'd be glad to answer them. But it's been a very, very busy, very busy time for your staff. We certainly were interrupted by the weather. We, we trying to make sure everybody's garbage got picked up and it was kind of dangerous out there for employees and people and I think we've tried to accommodate and answer every question. The one thing that we are doing is, is people have called in, we want to make sure that we have all the proper emails and phone messages so that if we have a emergency blast that's approved by the council, that, that our information will be more up to date and certainly we've encouraged people to call in and give us that information if they want to be included. And so thank you for your service on Friday. I know we've asked a, a lot of time from our mayor and board to keep you informed and to share information and, and y'all have never turned us down anytime we've needed that. So I, as interim town manager, appreciate your assistance. We couldn't have gotten all this done without your time. So thank you.
Thank you, Dave.
Thanks, Dave.
Counsel, are there any committee reports? Have we had any meetings?
The Planning Board did not meet in January, but the Livable Communities Committee met via Zoom on January sixth. We're working with our local AARP representatives to offer a series of workshops on topics such as making your home more age-friendly and avoiding scams. And we're also discussing a survey for town residents about making the town more age-friendly and easier to get around and also plan on, at, at some point in the future, hosting a paper shredding event.
How, how will that survey be? Will it be mailed to people or is it online only?
We're, we're going to be fleshing out the specifics, but we do want to make sure that there are ways that people who don't go online are going to be able to get that. So if that's, you know, if we're at a point where, you know, we can get with people face to face, that would be great or mail it out, you know, we'll, we'll just figure that out, whatever we can do at the time. But yeah, we want to make sure that obviously for But yeah, we want to make sure that obviously specifically for this population, we want to make sure that everybody is represented.
Well, did you have another?
No, that was it.
I have nothing to report at this time.
Okay, thank you.
Well, I was just going to say, I guess it is good that y'all did appoint me for the TAC again because we had our first meeting of the year this morning and I was elected chair of the TAC. That could have been very embarrassing or really quick, you know, time on it. So anyway, I don't know if it's good news or bad news, but we did have discussions on progress of the different projects and policies of DOT. Their safety performance targets, their TIP goals, their unified planning, a lot of these things really as far as for Jamestown are not real specific. But High Point has been awarded some CMAC funding and they're federal funds and it's to do a system-wide traffic signalization system study. And John Haynes gave the report, but Greg Venable said the town should contact them. I think Paul, I don't know if he can hear me, but we do have some of our signalization is controlled by High Point and I think on Main Street. So Paul, maybe I can get with you and we can get that list and give it to Greg so we can be included in that study. Okay. And then I think it's Grace Messenger. Oh, Anna, do you know Grace Messenger from COG, Councilor Gorman?
She came in after I started working here.
Well, she was there virtually and gave a presentation on this Clean City Coalition. Jesse Day was supposed to be there, but, but he overbooked himself, so. And it's something about, they were talking about earlier that John Harser was talking about finding alternate sources for fuel, you know, the electric cars as he was talking and reduce the fuel use. So I have a copy of that presentation if you guys want it. And then the last thing that they, we might have all seen this, I know we have in the news, the High Point Transit and Greensboro Transit partnered with Guilford County Schools and helped during the bus driver shortage, which they're still doing. And, and it's going very well for, for the ones that are using it. I thought that was a great partnership and a great solution, you know, at a time when we're in an emergency. So that was pretty much it for today.
Okay.
Thank you.
And Marla, do you have a report from Ragsdale?
I do. So Ragsdale started its second semester last week. We did go on virtual due to the weather, but we are back in person starting Monday. In regards to athletics, we have a wrestling try meet that's happening tonight at Ragsdale against Page and Grimsley. There's also a basketball game tonight against Page and also a basketball game Friday against Southeast. We had a swim meet last night, a conference meet at the Greensboro Aquatic Center. And our last swim meet is going to be against Western this Saturday morning. So winter sports are coming to an end. And this week we started COVID testing twice a week on Thursday, Tuesday and Thursday due for unvaccinated students in order to participate in our books.
Thank you so much. Nancy, do we have anyone signed up for public comment period?
No.
Any other business to address?
Well, I was just curious, has anybody heard anything about Wells Fargo opening the lobby? They've been closed all of January and part of December.
I haven't heard of it.
I had heard they were going to open the lobby back up in January, but it's been on month. I just hope that they're not going to close this bank, you know? I don't know who to contact. Does anybody know anybody at Wells Fargo?
I think Tony Capra was taking a leave.
Tony Capra is still the manager?
Well, he was, he took a leave of absence is what I had heard, but anyway.
Well, BBNT's lobby was closed as well, I believe, all due to COVID. So I, I wouldn't necessarily think that means it's anything about the actual bank. I think that's just what they're doing now.
Yeah, their drive-throughs still open, I know, because my wife uses them pretty regularly.
Okay. That's all I will just question.
No, ma'am.
Council, do I have a motion to go into closed session?
Yeah, I make a motion to go in closed session for General Statute 143318 to discuss matters related to personnel. Second?
On favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Thank you. Matthew, will you be?